... but deliver us from evil. For thy kingdom and power and glory forever. Amen.
Commissioner Vogel, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Position. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our love, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item on the agenda is consider approval of the consent agenda. I would like to request that item D be moved off for a little discussion, a little bit later, okay, after we go through that. Anybody else have anything they want to move down?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hall.
With item D removal, of course.
And a second by Vice Mayor Harry. Okay. Let's try the vote. Here we go.
Is the screen on?
Yeah. Straightened up then.
Lisa?
Yeah.
It's been making weird noise.
We don't have our screen.
Motion carries, okay? It works fine, Phyllis. All of a sudden.
Get a blank in them.
Yeah, but we'll just play, play with it then, okay? Item number D, we'll go to it right now then. I have a question, and maybe someone can answer this for me. It looks like we're, the city's going to give $50,000 to the expo. I'm a huge fan of the expo, but I also am greatly concerned, we've spent a lot of money out there, and I'm wondering what the expo's doing on this project to help pay for part of it. Can you come up and tell us, please, because I do know we raised our stall rates from seven to 15, is that correct?
Stalls at one time was $10 a stall, and we raised it to 15. We have, on the stall repair, we started in October, it went through our trust authority to repair a bunch of the horse stalls. Now, when you're talking horse stalls, you're talking pieces of what we're repairing. We've, here at the expo, we've already spent about $60,000 ourself on stall repair, and there's still considerable amount of stalls to repair, and we have several events that have voiced concerns about the, the, the conditions of the stalls from plywood bad in them, big holes, to scraps sticking out that could cut a horse open, and, and just, they, you know, these stalls was purchased in 1990, so they've been through a lot of abuse and use and everything else, so we're just basically looking to help fund, to get these complete for customers that we have, Triangle Horse Sale, all the horse events and everything else, so to finish them up, we think that that's going to almost finish them up, and so that's what we're kind of looking for. Like I say, the trust, the expo has already put about $60,000 of what we've done so far in stall repair.
Okay.
I have a question. We normally give for capital improvements out at the expo center around $100,000 each year, we budget that, is this coming out of that $100,000?
It will come out of the $100,000, hopefully that we request for next year, so basically we'll just be asking for $50,000 next year to go with that.
Okay.
Could I, could I ask, these stalls are wooden?
Yes, there are, half of them are wood down with plywood, three-quarter inch plywood, and the rest of them are inch and a half pipe.
Steel frame.
Steel frame pipe.
Plywood insert.
Why do, why do we have plywood in with horses?
That's just the way the stalls come, I mean, that's basically about the product that you put in them to be able to manage them and carry them and everything. You get in a little bit more cost if you want to make them solid steel and everything.
Thank you.
Usually they're waterproof plywood that afford, they're easier to handle.
And that keeps a horse from biting it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you for clearing that up, you spent 60 on it, okay?
I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the, the funding for the expo center, I guess.
Item D.
Item D.
Sure. Motion by Commissioner Dykstra, we have a second by Vice Mayor Harry. Let's vote. Well, what you did, Phyllis, you fixed it. Motion carries, thank you. Item number two is citizens' participation. We do encourage citizens to come forward and share thoughts with us. Is there anyone here that would like to come and share anything with us? Now, I think, anybody? Okay. No one coming forward then, I'll move on to item number three, which is a presentation by Creative Magic Children's Theater. Is there a representative here from that theater group?
Yeah.
Hang on one sec, I need you to state your name and all, and sign in, and please talk into that microphone because you're on TV. Yeah.
These are theater people.
I know, so they're getting to perform on television.
They don't need microphones.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for allowing us to come forward and talk to you this evening. We are very, very excited about this opportunity and hopefully increasing awareness and possibly bringing improvements to a wonderful venue here right in Shawnee.
My name is Jeff Hames, my wife and I, like she just said, we're owners and-
And I am Valerie Hames.
For the record. For the record. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to speak. We're just here to put a face on what we're doing because we've moved to the municipal auditorium. My wife and I are going on three years now, into our third year of children's theater for Shawnee and the surrounding communities. We were at the Ritz last two years, and our facility needs have grown, and our community awareness has grown, and we formed a wonderful partnership thus far with the Senior Center, which manages the auditorium, the muni, and we are in current production of Beauty and the Beast Junior, which has 46 children, 18 and younger, from our Shawnee schools, surrounding schools, and home school.
And with that being said, these kids and their parents, of course, all bring an income to the small businesses of Shawnee, and we definitely being, we like having the business brought to downtown Shawnee and, of course, the surrounding areas. I'm a school teacher at Horace Mann Elementary, and as Jeff may not have mentioned, both of us being teachers, we, we all see the importance of expanding the education of performing arts to our children. Now, of course, here in Shawnee, they have a wonderful arts education available in music and visual arts, of course, I'm the visual arts teacher at Horace Mann, but in the performing arts, they don't get that experience until they get into the middle school. But at Creative Magic, our youngest performer is six years old.
And of course, for every actor that we have, every child actor, it affects our projections at 50 other people in the community, grandparents, neighbors, business owners. So, the big thing that we're providing, the reason we wanted to speak today is because we're at the municipal auditorium. It is clearly and sincerely our hope to bring children's theater larger in Shawnee using the municipal auditorium as our venue. One other thing I want to, as the business that we do, for this particular production, the partnership that we've arranged with the Senior Center, which is connected right next to it and manages it, manages it, excuse me, we're both kind of sick right now, close to $2,000 of this production with Beauty and the Beast has been established and will go to the Senior Center to help cover their labor costs and other expenditures that they see fit to improve the Senior Center and the auditorium.
And all of that, of course, is at no cost to the city, and among those, and it's a GoFundMe event that we are sponsoring, that we have put together spearheaded, $3,500 that we hope to garner interest into our, our venue, will go for possibly reestablishment of curtains, a sound system, light system, that will be available for the usage of any kind of individual or group that wishes to use the municipal auditorium for their own purposes, and thereby expanding interest into a wonderful facility that's kind of remained dormant for many, many years.
Like my wife said, the municipal auditorium, built in 1936, by using children's theater, hopefully as our home base for other future years productions to come, not just for us, but where you want to be a springboard for other events to come to the muni and use it for its intended purpose like it has been meant, and we want to continue that tradition.
And I don't know if this is appropriate, but do you even have any questions for us as to what we're doing?
I do.
Yes, sir.
The Beauty and the Beast, it looks like is your next production that you're wanting to hold there, how many are you expecting to, to attend that?
Oh, I can answer that. On Wednesday, March 25th, our first show, our two shows are going to go, we already have 800 confirmed elementary kids coming from different schools, including Earlsboro, Seminole, and Shawnee. That's just for our opening day, 800 kids and the teachers and principals coming for that first opening show. That Thursday, the next day, is when we open to the public, like Shawnee Little Theater does, they run for two weekends, and we hope to do the same thing. Because we're at the muni, and we're not limited by this seating size that the Ritz, you know, has, I'm projected, I've projected conservatively over 2,000 people will come to attend to see Beauty and the Beast Junior.
I have a question, how are they seated? Do they sit on the bleachers, or you have chairs, or?
Currently, we have approximately 300 metal chairs that are folding, and then we have the bleachers for overflow seating, which we are going to be using. That's one of the things that we are earmarking with our GoFundMe grant that we're working toward, is to provide padded folding seating, and then who knows, the sky's the limit eventually, to see what kind of improvements we're able to go for. But so far, just, it, it has absolutely astounded us that within just a few days of promoting the event to the, of surrounding schools, that we had 600 schoolchildren immediately, their principals contacting and saying, hey, we want to bring our kids down to the muni for, to see this show. And then that's grown as well.
Now, you talked about lighting.
Yes.
Is there any, is there any lighting in that old stage there that's usable, or you think?
I was shocked, I was amazed, that in '36, when the WPA worked in conjunction to build the muni, they installed a huge 92 light foot panel that, on the stage is flat, but when we opened them, they revolve and flip up, they're, they're footlights, and they all work. I was, I couldn't believe that they work. So we have 92 footlights just at the stage. Above head, there are 72 other can lights that help illuminate there. But to do real, big productions in the future, of course, then you're looking at DMX lighting and special effects, but this is a springboard. We have the goal set forth for years to put curtains back there, restore the beauty of the muni, and be able to do massive productions.
What about the sound system? Is there anything in there, or is that, that's gone?
The sound system is gone, and whatever was there, it is no longer in existence. Now, Jeff and I luckily are in, we own, actually, it's of years of acquisition and of my own self, we have a very small sound system that is ours that we're going to be using for this production, plus we're borrowing other individuals and jumping soundboards across with borrowed microphones, and hopefully we'll be able to utilize some funds that we're able to kind of, okay, may we borrow, and we'll be glad to do this, wireless mics for this.
As teachers and directors, we've learned to be resourceful over the years.
Now, you may have already said this, Valerie or Jeff, but how do you fund this?
This is all funded through donations and through sponsorships, and some very blessed parents that came forward and said, hey, we know this is a need, and you have been wonderful about keeping our four children off of the streets for the past two and a half years, so because of that, we have decided to buy two wireless mic systems to help toward this show. And that's what we were, that we were told last Sunday. So, and that was, that was a wonderful blessing, so that was just the beginning.
So if school systems would like to contact you about them auditioning, how would they go about doing that?
We have a Facebook, plus we do have a webpage, and, but our Facebook is Creative Magic. Here in Shawnee, we're just Creative Magic Productions, and plus, our posters and flyers are all over the place, and schools have been notified, but mainly Creative Magic Productions and Word of Mouth.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for us?
I will just make a comment, I attended one of your productions down at the Ritz, and I was lucky to get a seat when I got there a few minutes late, but it was fantastic to see those very young children up on the stage being exposed to something like that. You're to be commended for what you're doing in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we appreciate you coming, and we hope that all of you attend Beauty and the Beast too when it comes.
I've got one little comment, I guess, do you guys make your own costumes and everything as well?
Yes, we do.
Wow, that's gotta be pretty intense, right? The scenes and everything?
Yes, we do, we've got some wonderful parents that work with us, plus Jeff and I both have a very extensive background in production theater.
Cool. Wow. That's, sounds like a lot of fun though for the kids.
It is a lot.
It's rewarding, we're, we don't just, each show that we do, we don't just look at, we don't approach it as directors, we tell all the cast and the family this, we approach it 50% as directors and 50% teachers mentality.
Right.
Which is unusual for what we do, and very special for what we do, because we're trying to-
Nurture the love.
Nurture, yes, thank you. We're trying to nurture.
Right, gotcha.
Great. So, so all you're asking for this time is the, is funding for the curtains?
No, no, we're just-
They're just telling us what is going on, they're informing us.
Really, you're not asking for spring?
We are not asking you for money. Yeah, relax.
They're about to sell 2,000 tickets, right? Are the kids getting in for free?
The schoolchildren are paying $2 apiece to come see the show. And basically, we're not asking for any money, we just would like for you guys to know what is going on, because this is something that we would really like to be doing for a long time to come.
Is it after school?
Yes.
Okay, what time is it after school? Like-
The rehearsals or the play?
Uh-
What do you mean?
The workshops, the rehearsals, the play, whatever it is that you guys are doing.
Well, this is like your children taking dance class or karate or anything like that, so this is children's theater. You know, we could do what Shawnee Little Theater does, but we, we want to be the only children's theater in Shawnee, which we are right now.
Okay.
So rehearsals are after school, of course.
Right now, our rehearsal schedule are, we usually do from 6 to 8 on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then right now, since it works in best to our parents' schedules, we do rehearsals on Sunday afternoons from 1 to 4.
Okay.
We, we fit it in between the church's schedules. Like I said, we would like to do this for a long time to come, and one of the things that Jeff and I are interested in, if you've been to Edmund, many, many years ago, whenever I was in college, I was with Oklahoma Shakespeare in the park, and back in those days, the police had to come out in the evenings and run the homeless people out of the park at Hayford so that we could perform. And now, to see what has become of Edmund since those days, we would like to see happen to Shawnee, because it can happen, and we would like for our kids to have the opportunity with the new splash pad and pool going in, perhaps to, several times during the summer, our kids performed some melodramas out in Woodland Park.
That'd be great.
So, that, that is something that we would like to be able to do as a summer program with our, with kids here in Shawnee.
So, to cap that, we're not asking for money at all, we just wanted to put, we want to let you know what our intentions are, to hopefully stay at the muni and do major productions for years to come is our hope, and work with the Senior Center.
That's great.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing this with us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's good.
Okay, item number four is a presentation of audited financial statements for the City of Shawnee and related authorities for the fiscal year 2013 and 2014. Someone here from Aldridge and Associates?
Yes, I'm Ann Cole, I'm the Senior Audit Manager for Arledge and Associates, and I'm here to present your financial statements. Okay, for fiscal year ending June 30, 2014, you presented a CAFR, annual financial report. We issued an audit opinion on that CAFR, and that was an unmodified clean opinion. For your total government-wide, you have approximately $92.5 million in net position. We also issued a report on internal controls that is unmodified, and we issued a single audit report that's under OMB circular A133 that tests your compliance with federal grants and expenditures. That was also an unqualified opinion with no findings. So, you should have gotten these reports through Cindy, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Does this mean we'll qualify for that big award again for having such a clean audit?
It's in review right now, everything has been filed on a timely manner and on time, and the GFOA, which is the Government Funded Officers Association, the excellence, we got it last year for the first time in, since 2006, and it's under review right now.
Well, it sounds to me like, didn't we have a couple of years ago, a little issue about grants or something? We kind of got a little report that we hadn't filled it out properly or something from the audit, and that was two years ago, not this past year.
Two or three years ago.
Yeah, you had some, you had some audit findings in, I think it was 2012-
Okay.
-that, when I had done the audit work, I've discovered that that has been reversed, so you no longer have that, it's all cleared up, you don't have that condition anymore.
Great. Any other questions?
If we have questions at a later date, is there a contact member?
Please feel free to contact us, we have a website, it's J M A C P A S dot com, John Arledge and Associates, and I just want to say thank you to Cindy, she was very helpful during our audit, and every staff member that we interviewed was very open and helped us take a look at the records, we had no difficulties during the audit at all.
Thank you.
Thanks for giving her a-
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job, city and staff.
Good job.
Good job. Item number five is a discussion concerning fire run fees, fire service area, mutual aid agreements, and fire service outside city limits. Staff report on this, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I just presented or prepared a quick memo to kind of give you an idea of what we do now on those, on those subjects, and was prepared to, if you have any questions about that memo, or if you, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
So, so on the map that's in the packet?
Yes.
The incorporated areas, there's mutual agreements in place?
Yes, sir.
But, but you still, do you still make fire calls to unincorporated areas as well?
We do, yes, sir, that, in, in the shaded areas, those are city limits, inside that red dotted line, that's our entire response area, so we cover-
How can it be our, help me understand, our entire responsibility, if this fire and everything is paid by the City of Shawnee people, how are we responsible for things outside the city where you, maybe unless you have an agreement with Bethel or say something like that?
The, the agreements that we have, cover, cover like, we're at the shaded blue area, that's Bethel Acres, city limits, that, that covers us for going in there. There's really, that, my understanding, there's no agreement in that unincorporated area. My understanding is, this has kind of been passed down, there's nothing in writing that I, that I'm aware of besides this map, that in the eighties, sometime in the eighties, that these boundaries were developed through the, through the county fire departments, they just kind of took a section of the county as their responsibility, and each, each department has a section-
Each department, but, but you don't get reimbursed or anything for those?
We, we do, the, according to their code and what we do, we bill, we, we can bill, well, we receive the, a portion of the county sales tax, which is roughly, right now it's about $45,000 a year, and that has paid for in the past, things we bought with that are, like our Engine 3 apparatus, that paid for that truck. Right now, we're, we're saving, actually, we're, I think, correct for wrong, Cindy, I think we're using some of that money to pay toward the new engine that we're buying. But as far, so that's, that's what we receive from the county, and then we have the ability to bill, and we do bill for fire calls in that, in that area outside the city limits, $100 an hour per apparatus. That's really pretty straightforward on, on structure fires, car fires, where we're going to have a name for sure, we're going to know who the owner is. Grass fires are more difficult, grass fires, a lot of times, we don't know whose property we're on, you know, we may be, and it's very difficult to bill, the, the way the code is written, we're supposed to bill each individual property owner for the time we spend on their property, which is very, very difficult for us to keep track of a lot of times, especially on the windy days, so we do the best we can with that.
I, I had noticed that in your memo, one of your concerns was that although two, it's only 2% of the impact to your services that you're providing, but that it was just high impact on the fires around the lake area, and that you had a strong need to place a fire station out around the lake area. Do you have a plan that's in process, or, or how would you approach that?
Well, that's, to be honest with you, that's about as far as we've got, is to determine the need, the need out there. When I was doing some research for this report, we knew that the response times weren't what we wanted them to be, we knew they weren't good out in that area, and since that city limits property, I just wanted to mention that, but that kind of helped us kind of see over a five-year average, our response times in the interior city limits is, is great, less than four minutes, that's, that's, that's what, that's what we want to shoot for, that's, that's the national standard that we're, that we're trying to hit. But outside there, it's about 12 minutes, and that's just because of the distance from the closest station.
Is Bethel Acres the first responder for that area out there?
Bethel Acres, we have, what we have is an automatic aid agreement with Bethel, and so we do, we have, which is a little different than the mutual aid agreements we have with the other communities, and the reason that was really done was to give the benefit of the ISO rating to people that live within five road miles of Bethel Station and a thou, and are 1,000 feet of a hydrant. That gives them the same ISO rating out there at the lake that you would receive living in the interior city limits, which is a good thing, and we're glad to have that. It can give you a false sense of security, though, because Bethel Station does not man 24 hours a day. They do a great job, and they help us out a lot, but during the day, that's when most of those guys have got jobs, they're not, they're not around, so that's when, that's when the grass fires unfortunately are at their worst, is during the day, when humidity's low and, and the winds are up, so that's kind of the, that's kind of what, what happens there a lot of times.
There's quite a bit of discussion a few years ago, that we actually had a house burned to the ground because we didn't decide whether it's in Bethel's area or in our area, so that's why the agreement came about, because of the criticism, and that came about because of that fire, I don't know, eight or 10 years ago.
We work very well with, with, with all the surrounding communities in Bethel, we work with them a lot because of that agreement, and because the lake is kind of in between us, you know, it's, it's in between our two city limit properties, so we, we make a lot of calls in that area. One update to this that I didn't put in there is, Bethel has just recently signed an automated aid agreement with Tecumseh to take everything south of Hardisty, so that's going to take some, some load off of us, we're getting ours updated right now, so that we'll revise our automatic aid agreement with them, where we're just north of Hardisty, in their, in their response area.
One of the concerns that I would have with coming up with the money to build a, a new fire station out in that area, and since there's such a, what, 2% of the calls are in that area, and we have the Bethel that can help out, is, wasn't there one of the fire stations, one of the three here, having some serious problems that was built a long time ago, and the building's-
One, I think, over on Bryan.
That's actually our newest station, yes, ma'am, that's our newest station, it was built in 1999, and it's-
It sounds like the dollars might, I mean, that's just my opinion, might have been spent there, but-
Sure, and I, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention, just because that is city limit property out there, totally understand, what happens a lot of times in our, in our, in our problem with a lot, a lot of issues, but there, but is the grass fires, they got such a head start on us during the day, that we have a hard time, it takes us 15 minutes to get out there, and-
I was evacuated about three years ago-
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, we were-
Because I live out there.
You know, you know about it.
They had Dale, they had Bethel, they had Pink, they had Shawnee, they had Tecumseh, they had every fire department out there.
Right, and we do, we work well with the county, with the county departments, and we, we receive a lot of help and give a lot of help, and it's, it's a good, it's a good, good relationship, it's just, there's- It's just, there's no, as I understand it, there's no real plans by Bethel to move toward a lot of departments, MacLeod and Tecumseh now have some paid firefighters in the daytime. And that helps a lot. And my understanding, I don't believe Bethel is doing that at this time, so just wanted to...
I'm sorry. Kate, you had a question, then we'll give you...
Well, I want to kind of get back to the unincorporated areas right now. The $100 per hour per apparatus, is that average? Is that what, like Oklahoma City would charge?
That's actually of the departments that I talked to, and I tried to talk to a lot of departments that are similar to us. I talked to Ada, Bartlesville, quite a few departments, and it's kind of all over the map. There are some that don't charge at all.
Zero to 500.
And there are some that charge 500.
How long have we been charging 100? 15 years?
That's probably, I've been here 20 years, and it hasn't changed in 20 years.
Are those other cities reimbursed by the county?
No, some of them are, some of them aren't. I've talked to a rural fire coordinator, Paul Simpson, has been real helpful in that. He kind of knows what's done throughout the county. And again, some of them receive some money, some don't. By far, we probably received the most from a county that he was aware of, the $45,000 amount. Now, that's an equal amount that all the county fire departments receive annually. But that, he said, that's probably about the highest that he knows of in the state as far as receiving from a county.
What city gets $500 just so?
Off the top of my head, I'd have to look back and see here.
I didn't notice it in here, huh? Well, you got Ada, Yukon, Duncan, Ardmore, Bartlesville, Eden, and Stillwater.
I believe that is Ardmore, has a flat $500 fire response fee. And there was one other one that, I'm sorry Commissioner, I've got that written down here somewhere. It may have been Ada. I believe it was Ada.
Well, how many calls do you take outside the...
No, I'm sorry, Bartlesville.
Bartlesville?
Yeah.
Do you take a lot of calls out there?
We do. Total here, we ran about, like, say last year, we ran a little over 500 total calls outside the city limits. Of those fire calls, which are the only ones we bill for, the fire calls, they were, I believe it was 190 last year, if I'm not mistaken, and for billable hours of 200 hours. Now, that's everything we could bill for. Some of those, we didn't have names for, because like I said, they're grass fires. We do everything we can to try to get a name, but a lot of times, we just, we don't know. And we've got to get back to town and get, move on to the next fire a lot of times, in one of those bad grass fire days.
So this was only limited to fire calls? It wasn't, you didn't have any ambulance response?
We do, that's where the 523 of those calls total, that would have been, that would have been any call we went outside the city limits on, that wasn't a mutual aid call. And that would have been in that non-shaded area, but inside the red striped area. And we don't bill currently for medical calls, recs, that kind of thing. We don't bill for that kind of thing, just strictly...
So winters are wrecked out on I-40, we don't bill for that?
No, sir. No, sir. We never have.
Out of our city limits?
Right. We never have, that's never been...
Do other cities?
I didn't talk to anybody that bills for that kind of service. Everybody that I talked to billed for fire calls. There are some departments that don't go outside their city limits for anything but fires. It's kind of all over the map. It's just, it's, there's really not a...
Who else serves in the area? Is IMSA, are they another?
React is our EMS, and they cover the entire, basically the entire county. And we respond with, on everything that's basically life-threatening type calls or anything. We really assist them a lot and allow them to, because they get to zero, level zero a lot, when they run out of ambulances, so...
What are their rates like? Are they free as well?
React, no, they charge, and I don't have information on their...
No, they charge, they're for profit.
Yeah, they do charge.
Well, so we don't have anything to haul people to the hospital, basically?
No, sir. We're a licensed first responder agency, and we supplement what they do, basically. We may, a lot of times, we're going to ride first on scene, stabilize the patient. Not all, I mean, they ride first some too, but because of where our stations are located, we ride first a lot of times, stabilize the patient. Early defibrillation is a big thing, then we have AEDs on our trucks and stuff. So we have a lot of guys that are trained to EMT basic, paramedic level, but our license that we work under is a first responder.
But I might be wrong, but I thought a year ago or so, I read something from you, Cynthia, about how much it costs to take a fire truck out of our deal.
If I remember correctly, it's like $300.
Like, how much?
Twelve hundred.
Every time you start a fire truck and send it out, it's $1,200.
Basically what I took was the cost of the department by number of runs. I mean, again, just...
Sure, right. But I mean, that's, that's just a math equation, but I mean, it's really hard to see, but...
Because it depends on the run, it depends on what apparatus, how many men are out there, there's a lot of factors, but in general, it's just simple.
Several years ago, we received a proposal that for accidents outside the city limits on I-40, for example, that we could receive payment from the insurance companies for manning those accidents. I'm just talking about the fire department manning those accidents. And we received such bad publicity on it, we dropped it and forgot about it and went on, because it got out, we were going to charge everybody for every call on the highway or anywhere else. So what we were talking about is to bill the insurance company, try to, you know, work with highway patrol, bill the insurance companies for those accidents like on I-40. Because now, today, I can't remember the funds, that all rural fire departments have probably the best equipment they've ever had, Aerosbury and Jacktown and everywhere else because of the, these funds that come to COED, and they inspect the fire units and everything like that. So they can respond, they're volunteer, but they can respond, and usually do so on a grass fire. Shawnee's always the first ones there because it's a full-time department. But for me, that's the ones that I'm interested in, it's not what goes down, you know, out in the rural area, increase. We might want to take a look at increasing those price on those calls, but what I'm interested in is up and down Interstate 40, because I understand we are responsible, or we take the responsibility for about 20-some miles of interstate. Isn't that right?
That's, I'd have to look and see to make sure, but that's maybe, that's probably accurate.
Just about from Aerosbury exit.
Yes, sir.
All the way to MacLeod, or up to, past MacLeod even. Because MacLeod, isn't it still a voluntary fire department?
Actually, well, MacLeod, MacLeod takes everything west of, I believe west of 102, they've got I-40. So it's about 10, 11 miles that falls within our response area.
So my reason I suggested this is not to increase the cost of helping our rural neighbors, but to increase the cost of doing business up and down I-40, when the insurance companies will be paying for it, rather than, let's say, billing individuals. Because I have property outside of Seminole, and when the fire department comes there, they send me a bill, I send it to my homeowner's policy, and they take care of it.
Right. I did want to mention that, that a lot, most insurance companies, for structure fires, car fires, that kind of stuff, they have a rider written into the policy for, you know, $500 to $600 per response on fires and stuff.
Well, the problem I have is, if we're looking out for our city and our budget and things like that, now, yeah, we look out for our citizens, but I guess the problem I have is, we're not buying fire trucks, the same fire truck, for the same price we were 20 years ago. And the fire department wants raises, right? And the equipment that you put on their backs and all that safety equipment's gone way up. And I think we ought to seriously look in the very near future about making some increase in those rates. I'm not saying take it to $1,000 or something, but I do think our costs are going up. And if we've been the same way for 20 years, that strikes me as a very timed, a little inflationist setting.
The fact that it's not based on property taxes too, is what we run into a lot. A lot of times, people, as we know, as the city's done a great job of educating people, they feel like they're a property, they're a taxpayer, because it should be, they feel like it's probably based on their property taxes, and it's just not. And it's very tough to know who is contributing to...
I think on a structural fire, I think the best bill I got was for $500 on a structural fire, which is, you know, I don't think is that bad, or on a grass fire or anything else. Because, you know, a few years ago, even before this, we had several thousand acres and homes burn over in Seminole, and I think Shawnee sent equipment there too. But anyhow, my main concern is not trying to get, you know, to our rural neighbors, but to try to raise the revenue along the interstate where out-of-state people and things like that, that don't have an interest or pay taxes or anything else in Shawnee.
Would it be proper to get, oh, I'm sorry?
Cindy, is it possible for you to look at the cost per run again for us and to provide us a table, including several variables, one, the in-city, those out of city, and those rural, as well as along the interstate, so that we can get some ideas? And is it possible for you to look at a comparison on those with cities of like size of ours here within the City of Shawnee?
True.
And do a comparison and provide us that data?
Okay.
Car wrecks versus medical versus fire, you know, we need it kind of broken out. I mean, if what James is saying is, you know, we may have, you know, want to do one rate for like a structured fire, a different rate for like an auto wreck on I-40 or something.
Right, right.
We have a good relationship with Stillwater. I think they would, don't we, with the water department? I think they would share some info with you.
I've talked with Chief Bradley quite a bit, and they do have, they have a pretty robust subscription service up there.
Right.
And the thing that, I've talked to him about that, and one thing that they, that's a benefit to them, is that's been kind of the accepted practice in Payne County for about 40 years. So people are used to doing that, and that's the opposite of what we have now, is it's...
If you get on I-35 North, there's not much up there to...
Well, if that is good, anybody's going to be able to do it.
Okay, so Justin, Mr. City Manager, and Cynthia, would y'all, maybe per request, this has been a great discussion, and thank you so much for sharing this information with us.
Let me ask you another question. On the accident where the highway patrolman was killed, was that y'all's area, or had you received a call?
That was actually, that was actually outside of our area. Peace of mind, yes, sir.
Was that, or are they even manned, or do you remember, do you know?
We, I think we were, we were sent out, we were dispatched after, not to the initial incident, my understanding, but we did, we sent some folks out there. We sent some lights and stuff as well, just in case they needed some stuff while they were out there. Checked in with them, see if they needed anything while they were out there. Just want to make sure I've got the understanding correctly about what we're looking at, so a little comparison of, and Cynthia, did you...
Like the highway, in-town, out-town, am I correct?
Okay. And then talk to some other communities.
Like per year run, how many were on I-40, how many were in-town, out-town, and what kind of fires and...
And what it costs for each one of those trips?
For the different services included.
So who does the billing?
Well, right now, it's clear, well, I say that, that goes through finance. And then what we do really, I don't ever know how much we see, if any, you know, what comes back.
Do you write a ticket for what you did, the service call, and how many hours you're out there and turn it into...
Yes, to finance, that's basically what we do.
And some of it's very hard to collect, because there's argument on whose property it was, or you don't have a correct address. I mean, we do the best we can. They collect about $10,000 a year, I think, if I remember correctly.
What this proposal that the company brought to us was, that they'd monitor the logs of the fire logs, and this company for a percentage would do all the buildings on the, out of city limits.
It may not be a bad deal.
And they would be responsible, if you made a call, then they'd be responsible for researching it out, who the people were, who the insurance company was, and stuff like that. And so like that. Justin, or Phyllis, I know you were here when we talked about how long has that gone, about three years, three or four? But I know that there's, they had a list of clients, and I don't remember whether there's any in the home at that time or not, but...
I remember that. I don't believe there was, I don't, France might remember.
But you recall what I'm talking about?
Yes, sir, I do. Yes, sir, sure do.
But you, I mean, we wouldn't be adding a burden to the finance department or anybody else to do that billing. That's what I'd be more interested in, if they, you know, even on a percentage basis.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioners, for those good questions and looking into this subject. Item number six is Consider Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund Lump payment. Some payment from defined benefit plan and refund of contributions from the defined contribution plan for Lloyd Davis Jr. Staff?
This is just a routine transaction.
So...
Shall I move? Second.
Have a motion and a second? Okay, let's vote.
It saved her, damn it, trip up there.
Oh, she needed exercise. She was falling asleep back there, I saw her.
Hadn't done any all day, I know.
Yeah, she's had it easy today.
You going to vote, Gary?
I did.
Vote her again. That thing, yours may be messed up, Gary. Thank you. Motion carries.
Mine's still blanking there.
Well, that's mine, so. Anyway, item number seven, discussion and consideration and possible action of a Visit Shawnee Incorporated VSI contract. Staff report in this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commission members. There's quite a bit of information in your packet regarding this agenda item, and it begins on page 48 of your digital packet, if you're following along. Included a memorandum, there are two staff correspondents in your packet, one for myself and one from city attorney. In my memorandum, it summarizes the, some of the history with tourism in Shawnee, and kind of how we got to where we are today with different entities and organizations. And then goes into more detail regarding the contract proposals before you. And then Mary Ann's memo and attachments go in greater detail on the differences between the two contracts, and so I'll let her comment more specifically on those items here in a little bit. But I did want to point out a few things. In 2013, the city and the chamber contracted with Zygus Consulting to conduct an organizational analysis and review operations and structure for a new entity that has now become VSI, or Visit Shawnee Incorporated. The principal of that firm is Bill Geist, and Mr. Geist made specific recommendations, and there's a report that's in your packet regarding that. He talked about specific contractual language that's contained within pages 15 through 17 of the report, and commented that the contract needed to be exceptionally clear when it was complete. And so after that process, the new group was formed, and that process has been done publicly through this body. And they have established bylaws and have the first board of directors established, and there are, there is representation on that board from, by the mayor, the city manager, as well as the expo manager. So there are three city staff members or elected officials that are on that board. And so after that board was formed, the process became more important to finalize a contract moving forward between VSI and the City of Shawnee. And so that contractual deliberative process has been ongoing for several months, and that's where we are today, is with basically two versions of contracts. One that was, that was, it's basically a modified version of the city's current contract with the Chamber of Commerce, and one that was prepared by VSI Legal Counsel. And both of those are included in your packet, and the differences between the two are highlighted and noted in red. You'll see that there's quite a bit of difference between the two. And so the VSI Executive Committee rejected the city's initial contract, and it's their position, and their chairman, Mr. Gilbert, is here this evening, he can also speak to this, but I think I'm summarizing it correctly, to say that their position is that the, they feel like the proposal from the city was overly restrictive. And then from the city's perspective, our feeling is, is that the, is that the VSI contract doesn't fully address the recommendations of Mr. Geist, nor contain all of the oversight or reporting requirements that we might prefer. We've met different times on this, and basically seem to be at an impasse to date. And so what we're asking, what staff is asking of the commission tonight is, just wanted to give you an opportunity to come give you the status update, have you review the two proposals, and hopefully provide us some more, some more direction. You have a number of options. I listed those on page two of the memorandum, and there are six primary ones, and I won't go through all of those, but you have a lot of options. You can accept the VSI contract, it has been reviewed for form and legality by the city attorney. You can move forward with a proposal that was presented by the city. You can, you can take the process in-house, you can... You can, you can take the process in-house. You can, you can contract with another firm. There's any number of options. At the end of the day, though, the city and the chamber have spent considerable time and resources towards finding a way forward with respect to tourism in the community. And I believe that the VSI board is a group of professionals who volunteered substantially to this effort. And we have staff and elected officials that have also spent a lot of time on this. And I think it would be regrettable, after all this progress, to not, not move forward and finalize a contract. And so, I, I don't think that we're there quite yet from, from the city staff perspective. But my recommendation would be to attempt further negotiations with the goal of adding some accountability and reporting standards that would be more aligned with the, with the first draft of the contract that the city proposed. And I hope that we can do that reasonably quickly, because every day that we're, that we're not under a contract is one day that we're, that we're not promoting Shawnee probably as much as we should be.
So, when you say that you, you'd like to see it, just keep on, keep it on, keep on negotiating, do we have like a timeline for that?
Well, we need a time limit.
Yeah, exactly. I'm just saying, I want to know like what, what the plan is.
I mean, I'm all for that, too. That's, that's the option, too, here. I'm all for trying to, trying to get to closure with, with VSI, you know. But, you know, another sixty days or something like that, you know, if we can't do it, then we need to look at something else, you know, a different direction, right? You know, and, you know, it's taxpayers' money, right? So there's got to be accountability, there's got to be, you know, visibility, there's, you know, there's got to be, it's got to be, we've got to know where that money's going, we, you know, just, it's taxpayers' money, so, so there's some things that we can't compromise on.
Yeah, two-page contract that, that they suggested, I just didn't think that, I mean, was in the city's best interest, obviously.
I certainly want to hear from Mr. Gilbert or from VSI in regard to their hesitation. I've heard the restrictions, I've heard the recommendations, and I'd certainly like to hear their input.
I'm available for questions after that.
Sorry.
Mr. Gilbert, can you share your wisdom with us, sir?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing us to be on the agenda. I don't know how much wisdom they'll be, Mayor, but thanks for the, thanks for the confidence. Here the city manager's kind of assessment of the situation, it, uh, yes, there, there were some issues in the past, apparently with the, with the CVB and with the city and with the structure. So, uh, there was a consultant group hired, came in, made some recommendations to the city, and also to the chamber, maybe of how we should proceed with tourism. The recommendation was to form a standalone 501(c)(6) was his recommendation. That group was formed, I believe, if I'm correct, there were four people involved in the kind of the initial, initial organization of the VSI, and I believe that would have been the mayor, Brian McDougall, the current city manager, Nancy Keith with the chamber, and Mayor, I don't remember who the fourth one was, who, who was?
Joe Ford.
Joe Ford, yes.
Past president.
So, um, that group took, took the, uh, took the recommendation from Mr. Geist. They formed each, each of the members on that board come from a certain, come from a very specific part of the, what they felt like would affect the tourism. There's some hotel operators, large business, small business. Each of those seats have a purpose of being there. Also, the mayor and the city manager have a seat, so that's two for the city. The Chamber of Commerce had their current chairman and a past chairman would, would serve on that. So, uh, so there'd be some chamber representation for all of the businesses. The Expo Center would have a person on that, and that's why I'm on the board. And, uh, but each, but each of those are very specific. We met, started meeting sometime back in the summer. We met, we, uh, that group adopted the bylaws, they adopted the Articles of Incorporation. We have a federal ID number, we have our application in with the IRS for our 501(c)(6) status, we met all their requirements. So that, that group, VSI, has gone as far as we can go without a contract for funding from the city. We first put together a contract from the executive group for those, let me back up a minute to the board. The board is comprised of members from the community, and all of those board members in the initial were either recommended by the mayor, or they were on there, like me being the expo, or the chamber, or the city. And then all of the members of that group then were brought to the city commission to be confirmed. So, so that group has been confirmed. They are your appointees to that group. So, after the discussion then with the contract, the VSI executive group brought a contract together using the current chamber contract, the recommendation of Mr. Geist, came together with a contract, brought it to the VSI board, emailed it out to the board members prior to the VSI meeting, and passed unanimously from that group with no, no votes. So, we think, as a VSI board, we're moving forward, and that was in November, I believe. So we think we're moving forward in a very positive direction, because again, the mayor and city manager are on our group. So then we receive a contract back from the city attorney that is, is quite different in, in regards to some of the things that we had asked for. And I guess maybe you guys have that in front of you? So, um, there were some things that our group felt like that were a little restrictive as far as what the group that you confirmed to be on the board, to, you know, I don't think that group felt like, and I don't have that contract in front of me, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. But, you know, we've, you know, we didn't feel like for us to buy anything over twenty-five hundred, we should have to come before you guys and ask for that authority.
Well, that was one part of it, though, Mr. Gilbert, wasn't it? Wasn't there another part that I saw that said something like, uh, we were just asking for any of the, the things that were bought with city funds to be the, the property of the city later on, because it's bought with the city funds? Well, that was something that we would like to have in the contract as well, that was not in the contract that was proposed to the city.
We, we, uh, again, the proposal was for that group to be a standalone entity. We envisioned ourselves to operate to be a contract for services for the city, much like SEDF is. And I see Tim Burks here tonight.
Right.
Um, they contract with, with, with the city on an annual basis to provide economic development services to the city.
Right.
So we would envision, Visit Shawnee Inc. would provide tourism services for the city. So, so, uh, being the open meeting request, um, you know, I mean, we have a copy of their contract, so we kind of patterned the Visit Shawnee Inc. contract very similar to the SEDF contract.
Isn't the SEDF contract about seven pages or so long?
No, it's.
It's longer than two pages, though, isn't it?
It, where the, where the, there's, there's four pages.
Four.
The, uh.
But I think that is.
Well, I mean, you put the signature page, it makes it five, but where the primary differences is, in, in our contract that we've proposed, like in the, I'll just use one example, uh, you know, I heard some questions earlier. We have no, uh, we have no concern about making reporting. That group is a group of professionals. They understand about taxpayer dollars. They understand the openness of that. And we very much look forward to supplying you guys with a quarterly report of our, of our services, of our expenditures. We haven't, uh, we don't have any problem providing an audit. We would want to provide an audit. So where the primary length of the contract, it appears to me, differences is, where we say we'll comply with the open meeting and open records law, the SEDF contract lists all the statutes and all that, which is fine with us, if, you know, I mean, we can make all the paper we want. But, but we've asked for the same thing, for us to comply with open meetings law. We, we, in one of the meetings we were all in, we had initially said annual reporting, but there was some concern. So, uh, the discussion was, maybe we go to quarterly, and, and, and we've changed that to say quarterly, and that we would, we would come make a report to you guys. We think tourism is a great thing in Shawnee. I mean, we live in a wonderful community. We have a lot of nice activities going on. We have a lot of tourism going on. So we would want to bring that to you guys. We would want to show the good things that we've done. We would want to show where the expenses are, because again, this is taxpayer dollars.
I think, uh, I guess what I'm hoping for is that we have like benchmarks and like things that you're going to achieve. Like, so we know that we're getting a return on investment. We can, we can put it up against it. Like, what has our half a million dollars gotten us, you know, in a year from now? So it'd be nice to see those, those things kind of, I guess, fleshed out on paper, but.
The, the, um, current CVB provides a budget, annual budget of, of activities that we're going after. Tourism, as so many things are, work several years in advance. You know, we, we may, and I can just speak with activities I've been involved in at the Heart Oklahoma Exposition Center. You know, we bid on projects that are three, four, or five years out. And so then we would go to the tourism entity and ask, say, can you provide support funding for the year 2018? And that obviously would be in the budget presentation we bring to you guys. So, so we, yeah, you know, I mean, call them benchmarks, call them targets, call them projects that are coming on. And as with anything that comes up, um, there are some events that might be in another community today, and they may not want the community they're in to know they're looking at Shawnee in 2017. So we would hate to come lay that out and say, you know, we're bringing event X, uh, XYZ from another community, and then their community gets hold of it like, hey, you know, we're going to up our ante. So, some of that stuff is, is, I mean, I hate to say confidential, but some of that stuff is held a little closer.
Yeah, SEDF does the same thing as well.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Mr. Gilbert, I've heard you say several things here tonight that you had concerns with, and I'd like to see if I'm clear on this. So feel free to correct me where I'm wrong on this. I heard you mention reporting, auditing, outcomes, our benchmarks, open meetings law, and purchasing authority with that.
Well, we, the, you know, now, now, are those things you're saying I may have a problem with, or that our group has a problem?
Or just some of the concerns that you've indicated here?
No, no, the, the only, uh, we know that taxpayer dollars have, have openness. We have no problem with the open meeting law. We just didn't list the number of the statute.
Okay.
We said in the contract, and if, you guys have it on page one, item number three, under section C, says compliance with open meeting and open records laws. So, so we fully intend to do that. Reporting says VSI will provide quarterly reports of its activities and finances, including income, expenditure, and balance to the city commission. One of the initial contracts we had said that we'd provide it to the city treasurer, or to the city finance director. We changed that because we felt like instead of going, going to the city finance department, we'd rather come to you guys or your designate, whoever you would want to send us to. We have no problem in our contract with the city coming to look at our records and books. We would welcome that at any time.
So you're going to keep your own minutes, too?
The, the only issue that we may, that, that we may have would be if, if, if we wanted to buy a copier to use for Visit Shawnee Inc., uh, we would, we would hate to come before the city commission and say, you know, you gave us a budget, but can we, can we spend it? So, uh, because again, we would make a budget proposal to, to the city commission, which would list X number of dollars for capital expenditures for office supplies or whatever, so. No, we, we have no problem, and I, and I can speak for that group. We have no problem with openness. We have no problem with reporting. We have no problem with coming to the city commission. And, and if it would be, make the city commission more comfortable, we can list all those statutes, and we can fill up another page, if it's a page that we need to fill up. But, 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 you know, I mean, we have that listed in there, but we're good with however you guys want to list that.
So, so, Mr. Gilbert, you, you brought up one thing around the spending limit that you, you're not comfortable with, is what the city's asking. Are there other things that the city's asking that you're not comfortable with as well?
Well, we, we, uh, we, we met with the mayor, we met with the city manager, we met with the city attorney, myself and Matt Griffin, who represents VSI from the attorney, as our attorney. We met and we thought we'd kind of outlined a contract about some of the, some of the concerns. But there's, you know, there was, uh, and again, I don't have that contract in front of me from the city. I probably should have brought it so I could go over it specifically.
One there is that I, I noted it seemed like was a difference was around the conflict of interest.
Okay, I don't, you'll have to help me there, Commissioner.
Well, it, it sounds like we may be closer together than what, than what we realized. You know, I, I still think that we need to, to, to work together and, and see if we can, you know, mutually agree on a contract and come to closure. But we need to, you know, we need to set a, a goal of having this done in ninety days or something like that. And we just can't keep on, you know, keep on doing the same thing. And, and the, you know, at least I'll say this, everybody on, on that board, you know, is, is very, very good. We don't have no complaints with any of the people on there. That's, that's not, it's just the contract is what we're trying to, to get to closure, right?
Sure.
It's not the, the people that are on there making those decisions, but we still have to have some legal things and stuff in there, just from a contractual perspective, and like you said, you said it, you know, it's taxpayer money, and we just got to make sure that, you know, it's done right.
Absolutely. And, and, and whenever we left that meeting, I believe the instruction from, the mayor kind of helped me. I think the instruction to the city attorney and to the VSI attorney was to line out all the legal concerns. And, and I, I think that was, that was what we had asked to be done, and it was my understanding that, that the legal concerns had been done.
I said that I could, I could, after the changes, that I could approve it as to form a legality, which is, is my responsibility. As long as I'm talking, I, I want to clear up what seems to be a point of confusion. Advance approval of the city is required only for capital expenditures in excess of five thousand dollars for depreciable assets, or ten thousand dollars for services, publications, et cetera. But, and if that's a line item in the budget, it doesn't, that counts as advance approval. The twenty-five hundred dollars is merely to cover if equipment is purchased for twenty-five hundred dollars or more. That ends up on the city's side of who owns what, unless at the time it's purchased, you, you waive it. But there's not a twenty-five hundred dollar spending limit that, that you have to approve. I'm not sure where that confusion comes from.
Yeah, I think there's a little confusion. You know, I've, I've read through both those versions a couple of times. I'm getting confused now.
I think that section was, I think that section was actually left out of theirs, is that?
Me, too, Commissioner.
But the, um, what I was going to ask about that, that kind of stuff, Mary Ann, is, is if they're going to spend twenty-five hundred dollars on a copier, does that go through, does that need to, does, you know, they can have access to the state, you know, a buying?
They don't have to bid it.
They don't have to bid it?
If they're going to spend in excess of five thousand dollars for, say, a copier, I mean, it's an awful lot for a copier anymore. If, they're going, maybe it's not. If they're going to spend in excess of five thousand dollars for a copier. If they're going to spend in excess of $5,000 for a copier, and they know they need a copier in the coming year, then it just goes in the budget, copier, just along.
Just like, just like our stipulation?
If they get into a jam during the year and they need a copier, you approve an amendment to their budget. I mean, that's, that's basically what, what happened.
It's over, so.
I was having a budget that has to be amended. Same thing with year and funds.
The one thing I do want to ask about that's not necessarily a legal thing, but just a, a functional thing in that contract, and maybe, and like I said, I've read both of them a couple of times, so, but it looked like there was a request, in, in the one that VSI is proposing, that you wanted to be able to have out of, out of state, out of city meetings stuff, and I just have a question about why would you want to do that?
Sometimes, for example, the, during the term of the CVB, their director may go to Phoenix to visit an RV rally to try to solicit RV rallies to come to Shawnee, which they've been very successful.
I'm not talking about visiting to try to bring things. I was talking about having board meetings outside of.
We, I don't.
Did I miss?
It's in the bylaws.
Yeah, I don't.
It wasn't there, was it?
Oh, it's in the bylaws?
Yeah, to have board meetings, and I, I think that we need to take that out. I think that all the board meetings could be in Shawnee.
Well, we, we, I guess I missed that because, but, because the, because the travel that, that, I mean, the way I interpreted it was that we have the ability to go out and recruit tourism activities to Shawnee.
Not trying to stop that at all, in the fact that we would probably encourage that, right?
Yes.
But it was the way it was worded, and if I read it correctly, Mary Ann, it was that you could, would have the ability to have board meetings outside the city of Shawnee and even outside the state.
What it sounds to me like, and I don't mean to jump in, but it sounds to me like that all of, we need, maybe the group can get together a few more times and try to work out all the disagreements and all the details, so.
You asked, Commissioner, about a timeline. Sorry, Commissioner, I hate to interrupt, but, but you're, you're right, but, I mean, you asked about a timeline from the VSI. Again, we felt like we would be operational January 1.
Yeah.
You know, our goal and, and our wish and prayer was that we'd have it, you know, operational then. Then we moved to a March 1 date, and again, because of, because of public dollars, and you guys are aware of this, the city cannot obligate for more than one fiscal year at a time, so we have a, you know, we have a July 1 renewal date, and, and, so, I mean, we're fast approaching that. And for you guys, y'all are all familiar, the, the current director for the CVB has resigned.
So what's going on there?
And took another position in, in another community. So, so we, we are, we are currently without, and.
Am I interim or anything?
And the chamber has, who, who has a contract with the city has been trying to handle the tourism duties, but as you know, the, the chamber has, has their own activities. So we had asked, we, the VSI had asked the chamber to advertise for tourism, to start the process to advertise for a tourism director for whichever entity was going to conduct tourism. But, but the, probably the chance of, of recruiting someone and having someone when we don't really know who's going to handle tourism in Shawnee is, is a little challenging.
What concerns me is what's not happening and what needs to be happening in the meantime.
That's a huge concern of ours.
We need to get the contract done.
Okay, I don't like 90 days or anything like that.
Well, we don't know where we're going.
Thirty or forty-five days.
Again, let's just find out, maybe, here's a thought, and let me bounce this off him. You tell us what you don't like that the city doesn't, that the city wants, and in our next meeting, we go through that list. And you, Mary Ann, you tell us what needs to be in there.
She has.
Well, I, I think that this is one of those times you guys kind of need to tell me, because I already offered what I thought you guys wanted. So I, I kind of need input from the commission about which of those things they don't want.
Did we give, did we give him, their group, a copy of what we wanted in there?
It's in the pack, I mean, well.
It's in our packet, but I mean, do they have?
I got an instruction to prepare a contract.
Right.
Similar to the chamber, but without the TAC and all that. I did that, and it kind of sat in somebody's office for a little while. I heard from Matt, I kept, you know, finally I got, not finally, but Matt sent me their contract. I went in and took it back and sent it to them without any input from the manager because, so I didn't prepare one in response to theirs. They basically, each of us made a proposal, is what happened. So, you know, I'm, you know, whatever y'all want to take out, it's up to you to take out.
All right.
I, I'd rather, you look out for our legality of the city. I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Our best interest.
I don't know what's legal, in all honesty. That's your job and your profession.
But what I don't understand is, we, I mean, the chamber, city, somebody spent all this money for this guy study, and then we're not even coming close to contract. So I don't understand the problem. I mean, we spent all this money.
He kind of wrote out the plan, didn't he?
We spent all this, all this money for this advice, and then to me, I mean.
They took all the appointments off the advice in the site guys' report, right? All the appointments were made off of the advice of the site.
Yeah, those were.
No, no, they're, they're, no, they're, I mean, there's some, there's some differences in, in the appointments of the, of the group from the original incorporators.
I thought they were all just in the list.
Their, their, his recommendation was for a three-year contract, and, and obviously, obviously, that's not an issue, so, so the, the, you know, again, his, you know, he, those guys come in and they make recommendations from, from their side. And I, I think, it was my understanding, that the recommendations, then you give and take, however the recommendations would be, and, and then you work out a contract that works for, worked for each local community, whether it be Shawnee or whether it be someone else that he consulted with.
I mean, we spent, spent time, I mean, I personally spent time with him and the chamber dead and the people involved, and, you know, I thought it's pretty well lined up that, you know, that this would be what the contract is. So I guess I'm just confused at why we, you know, spent that kind of money, and then, and I expected to have a contract January the 1st.
Right. And I spent time with him as well, Commissioner, and, and you know, that's something, I, I mean, I guess.
Maybe we should just hire him, come back down here, sit down with both sides to let him work out the details.
I guess the, the concern, I mean, we've got a couple of issues going on. One, is it legal? And we all met in the city manager's office a month ago, three weeks ago or, or something, and, and we worked out, we felt like we worked out the legalities of it, but, but, but then there appears to be some principal differences, so maybe that's where we're at today, would that be a fair assumption of?
Okay, so that we just get off a dead center here.
Right.
Can you get your attorney to sit down, do you think?
Matt and I tried to talk this through when we were together, and, you know, with all due respect, I really think this is a policy issue that you guys need to, I mean, that's kind of when Mike Clover and I worked up the contract that this is based on, if you remember, we had lots of meetings, but the parties pretty much worked it out with us doing the paperwork. And I'm, I'm just, you know, I don't feel like I'm the one that ought to negotiate the times of reporting and what's to port.
Okay, let me make a suggestion, and Mary, appoint two other people to meet with Mary Ann and Randy and attorney, and let's, two commissioners, let's get it worked out.
Okay, I'll just do that. Take the power of the chair, Mr. Dykstra?
Sure.
Can he work that in your schedule?
Yeah.
No?
Yes, sir.
And, let's see here, Keith, you travel a lot. Commissioner Agee?
I'll tell you what I'm going to do, though. Commissioner Agee can do it, but I'm going to send, I'll look at both of them and say, this is what I like, this is what I don't like.
Do you want to do it?
No.
We need three.
I'll accept that appointment and with input from.
Okay, from all of us, okay. Is everybody cool?
Don't leave us out the draft.
Mayor, upon a committee.
There is no problem, except I will tell you.
And I don't like having that board meeting outstate.
No later, no later than the second meeting next month.
I'd say four, five days, whatever.
We have to have that done, okay? And we'll either do one of these five or six things, okay?
Okay.
No, that will include Justin also.
Yeah, Justin's part of that.
Hey, Mr. Dykstra, you going to second that motion there with Mayor?
Second.
Sixteen.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was the motion again?
Mayor appoint of two.
Mr. Mayor appoint two people.
Okay, work with everyone, get it straight out. I tickle me to that, let's move on.
Okay.
During the discussion portion of the motion, just so that you'll know, from the VSI board and from the executive board, we're very excited about tourism in Shawnee. We look forward to the opportunity to work with, with the city. We view this as a good thing. We want it to be good and, and.
Time to move forward, Randy.
Does she say they're good or, or making some other point?
And it's, and it's time to move forward, but, but I just want to tell you thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We need to vote on the motion. We have a motion and a second. All these lights flashing, can we vote?
The motion was to.
Okay.
By the second. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, sir. Motion carries now. Does every, the, the two committee members fully understand their ground rules?
Got to get back to you by March 17th.
The next second meeting in March.
Sixteenth, yeah.
If you have it before then, I hope.
Who's in charge of calling this meeting?
You two.
All right.
With Randy.
Let me have Dana coordinate that.
Okay.
All your schedules, if that's all right. Good suggestion. Okay, everybody ready to move on? Commissioners?
Basketball screen.
Okay, item number eight is a public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to, oh, did I skip one? No, I guess I did. It's item number eight. Rezone the Golden Acres cottages to located on West MacArthur Street between Leo Street and Ellis Drive from R1 single-family residential to PUD planned unit development. Case number PO215 applicant, the land-run group. Staff report, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm actually going to do here a joint staff report for items number eight and nine.
Okay, sir.
Which will refer to case number PO215, the rezone from single-family residential to PUD planned unit development, and also case SO115, which is the preliminary plat approval. So actually, if you'd like to bring up exhibit number two, which would be the, the master plan for the Golden Acres cottages, this might be the best visual representation as we kind of go through this. The site we have here is actually located on West MacArthur between Leo and Ellis, which would be.
I think that's page 97.
Ninety, ninety-four.
Ninety-four? Okay.
It's on the map.
Okay. Ninety-four.
And what you're looking at here is, again, the PUD master plan, which will show you general layout of the site, including the private drive, Chase Addison Avenue here. But this site here is located on West MacArthur between Leo and Ellis Drive, which should be just east of St. Gregory's and just west of the airport there. They actually have directly east of this property is an almost identical planned unit development that was approved in 2011, November of 2011.
Is that wheat pasture in there right now? Is that, no, there's not.
No, that'd be.
Huh?
It's, currently, there were four houses on this side, so it was four lots.
You're on the south side?
Yes.
You're on the south side?
Correct, yes, sir, yes.
Okay, sir, I'm with you.
Be on the south side of the road there between Leo and Ellis. And as I was saying here, this, this development is actually an almost identical representation of what is directly east. Right next to it there is the Golden Acres cottages one.
Just a flip-flop, isn't it?
It's exactly what it is. So it's a, it's a planned unit development, quite similar to this, that was approved in 2011. And what we have here is 15 dwelling units, which would be separated into two duplexes, one triplex, and two quadplexes throughout this site. There will be a, a private drive that, that has two access points, one from MacArthur Street and one from Wiley. And on both sides here, so on MacArthur Street, there'll be a six-foot sidewalk required along the street here, but also as part of the PUD, they will be including a sidewalk along Wiley Street, the property line there. We will also have six-foot privacy fence along the north side and the west side, dividing it from the residential properties along the west. And, let's see, we'll also have the sewer and water provided for this site. The one variance that's requested along with this, this PUD here is the allowance for two monument signs. One would be along MacArthur Street, and the other would be along Wiley Street. Both would be 18 square feet, which is our requirement, but because it's under five acres, we would only allow one typically, but in this case, staff sees no objection to allowing both monument signs there.
Is this, this isn't low-income housing, is it?
It's not.
No.
It's, it's, those other three houses between them?
Credit or anything?
Uh, there's none, there, there are from the south side there, there are three houses in between them.
Are they, is there anyone, has the city talked to anybody with those folks, or they?
No, we've heard nothing. We've received no, no input from those three properties in particular, but, but again, this would be.
Adjacent on all three sides?
Yeah, it'd be adjacent, adjacent on all three sides.
Okay.
What type of notification do they receive on their way on there?
Yeah, so, so they receive a written notification, anything within 300 feet, any property owner within 300 feet receives that notification, and also public notice through newspaper, public notice.
List of those property owners on your, with your staff.
Great. On the sheet here, listen.
For a little more details on this, this particular development, especially as it associates with Golden Acres One, is that, no, it is not low-income, and so these properties are all maintained through a property association, which would be part of the subdivision covenants, that all maintenance outside of the, the actual properties themselves would be, be funded directly from that property association, a fee that's paid, and I believe this is all one total fee between the rent utilities and, and the maintenance fee, all put together. It's not for any specific age category, whether young or old.
Families were.
Correct. It's, it's, it's for, for any and all, and they are two-to-three bedroom housing for each, for each and every one of them. So all be two-to-three bedroom designs on each one of these sites. The, the main amenities that you're going to see here for this specific site would be the, the splash pad, which would be represented just on the south end of the entrance from MacArthur, and a walk path that actually connects to the development to the east, Golden Acres cottages one. And they, they also have picnic and open space along the west side there, and the addition of 13 extra off-street parking spaces that are generally lined around splash pad and, and the amenities that are, that are present.
They also have a tiny basketball court there, too.
Yeah, they do have that on the, on the east development there. Yeah, Golden Acres One has that, so between the two.
Is the splash pad open to the public, or is it just going to be a?
I don't believe so. I believe it's, it's internal.
Residential splash pad.
Correct.
Not community.
I live right next to it. I might take my kids over there.
Run your kids out and everything.
So the planning commission recommended approval?
Correct, so for both the, so in fact, to, to separate this for you a little bit, case PO215, the actual rezone was approved with no conditions completely by all commission members, and the preliminary plat, we, we do have conditions, and I'll, I'll mention those here in just, just one moment. To wrap it up, we, we do, again, have, have the fence, the privacy fence will be required along the west, and after talking with the, the developer, that is, is actually going to be there, so we'll be separating there from the, the west, the residential properties. There will be a private drive built to city standards in, in all ways there. The stormwater drainage and engineering at this point has all been approved by, by engineering. And so, so staff does recommend approval for the preliminary plat with the conditions listed on the last page here, so there's six conditions, six conditions listed here, which would include that deviation, excuse me, of the, the monument signs. And most of these standards, of course, apply towards final plat approval.
So we need a motion on item number eight first, right?
No, we're going to have a public hearing here in just a second, and we'll, we'll get to that point.
So.
Any more questions to the staff on this item? Now that we've kind of figured out where it was and all that.
Well, there's already some, I guess duplexes on Wiley, isn't there?
Yes, Leo, too, yeah.
That area is really growing out there, isn't it?
It is.
It's a booming area. Thank goodness it's in I-93 school district. I know they're happy about that.
Will Rogers, yeah.
So Justin, at this time, we don't have that included in any type of strategic planning effort, to your knowledge? Master plan, comprehensive trail is?
No, this is an interesting area where it's, it has been transitioning over time from, um, single-family residential to, to multifamily residential, and, and so with the development to the east that occurs over years ago, and, and then there was a property to the south, as Commissioner Harrod mentioned, that was also rezoned, so in our, in our, in our.
On west, there's a new addition there, too.
In, in west, there's an apartment complex as well, so in our, in our planning documents, it does recognize that, it does, and this development is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan.
Great.
Thank you.
It's exciting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open the public hearing in this matter. People that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this? If there's anyone would like to come forward in favor of this? Okay, no one coming forward, then anyone that's opposed to this, feel free to come forward. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. We do have a staff recommendation in this matter, and the chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
So we have to take these separate, right?
Right.
Motion to prove, agenda number eight, is that correct?
And that's to rezone it, right?
Right.
Check them.
With the restrictions that he put in there.
That goes on the.
No conditions. They're just going to add another sign, two signs to one, is what you're saying?
That's for the preliminary plat, the rezone.
Okay, so we have a motion on this matter. Do I have a second?
Check them.
Second by Vice Mayor Harrod, okay. Would you like to read this, please, ma'am?
This is an ordinance concerning zoning classification of property located within corporate limits of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, from R1 to PUD planned unit development, as described below, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Shawnee accordingly. And the tract of land is lots eight, nine, ten, and thirteen in block one, Golden Acres addition to the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and it is West MacArthur Street between Leo Street and Ellis Drive.
Okay, let's vote, ladies and gentlemen. Motion carries. Item number, uh, nine, which we already have a staff recommendation on that matter, the chair will entertain a motion on item number nine.
That may have included, there's six conditions.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Harrod and a second by Commissioner Hall. Let's vote on that matter. Motion carries. Item number ten. Discussion, consideration, and possible action to confirm agreement for legal services of the Love Law Firm. Staff report on this matter?
Next, I just lost it. Um, the, um, city, for some years, about twenty, I'm guessing, has used the services of the Love Law Firm. Uh, over time, that was Margaret Love, then it was Margaret and her son Matt, and Matt has gone on to, um, be a staff attorney with the Oklahoma Mutual Assurance Group, and Margaret's husband, Jack, has folded his, they've put their practices together, they're all lawyers in that family. Um, Commissioner Shaw had asked about a memorialization of that. I don't know if there was ever a letter agreement, because obviously I wasn't here, we didn't find one. Uh, y'all have, some of you on the commission have used Margaret for other purposes, and she negotiated my contract, I believe she had negotiated Brian's. So we asked her to memorialize the arrangement we have with her now, which is basically a hundred and forty dollars an hour. The other attorney in our area that, that I believe is equally experienced is Tony Puckett at the McAfee Teft Firm, and Tony charges three hundred dollars an hour. So, the, we, this is not one of those times that every time we need labor advice, we can go out for proposals, because we may need an answer or help, you know, in four days for a hearing. Uh, so that's one reason that she's always been the go-to person. On that.
I guess my question had been at that time, did we have an existing contract, and what were the terms of that agreement? Since that time, you've provided this contract, and I certainly appreciate that. However, I still have some concerns in regard to the language within this contract, in regard to the, um, what all is being compensated and the employment of experts. To me, I believe we should tighten that language.
I'm sorry, I, I kind of, under, under employment of experts? Okay.
What all was being compensated under that area and under the area of employment of experts.
Well, in the area of employment of experts, Ms. Love will consult with the city regarding such employment prior to the time the person is retained. There is language in the ordinances that'll, that gives Brian, I'm sorry, whoops, the city manager and the city attorney the authority to go ahead and retain experts in those situations. So, um, it's, again, it's a short, short-term deal, and, um, I don't know how to really to tighten it under, under that, other than it has to have approval first.
We don't pay, um, what do you call it, a private investigator, a hundred, a hundred and forty dollars an hour either, right?
Oh, no.
She'd be a different rate.
Well, I'll just, I'll just give you an example, some years ago, well, I don't know how many, eight or ten, uh, maybe not that long. Um, you had, um, a department head, it was while Phyllis was in, had a department head here, and there had been some allegations, and they wanted somebody from outside to come look at it, and I came and looked at it, and, you know, I don't remember how much they paid me, probably a hundred dollars an hour, a little less than they were doing, which would have been less than I would have charged even my city clients, yeah. Uh, so it's that, that kind of, come in, look at this, tell me what you think. I've done them for them over the years, they've done them for me, there are other people that they've used, other people I've used, uh, but it, it's pretty much a, hello, Mary Ann, can you come over here and have this done by the end of the week?
I, I guess my concern is continuing in regard to the area of compensation in, as well as in the employment of experts. To me, we should have some type of language in our contracts indicative of trying to put a cap on a dollar amount that, that would then come before the city for approval. Not that I'm not trying to allow for flexibility to be given to you, Ms. Carnes, or to Justin in his role as city manager, but for the need to ensure that we have some type of mechanism in our agreements that, um, puts restraint on how much we're going to, to leave that funding open to.
Okay. I, I will tell you that every time we use outside attorneys, their bills come to me, I read them, and I have, have never sent one of Margaret's back, we've had other outside attorneys I've sent back.
And you stay within your budget.
Stay within my budget.
Okay.
Yeah, motion to approve the Love Law Firm contract?
I thought we already did this.
I thought we did too.
This is.
Check them.
Grievance and collective bargaining, right?
Well, all kinds of personnel.
Yeah. We have a motion by Commissioner Hall and a second by Vice Mayor Harrod. Okay, let's vote.
Just going to say if we could add.
It does.
Could you, could you go ahead and, like, if it passes, can you go ahead and get her, the information she needs, like, more like a?
I can give you a report, if you'd like a report on the, against the budget. I don't always know how to estimate ahead of time.
No, I think she's more concerned with, like, sort of putting something in there that, I guess, has like a.
There's no caps here.
Guess, yeah, I guess a cap, but on your budget, I don't know.
I mean, that's up to y'all, like I say, I stay in my budget, and if I can't, if something happens, well, for one thing, Cindy would let me know, I would not be able to approve.
She's bad about that, isn't she?
A purchase order to pay, so.
Miss Taskmaster.
That's, that's certainly a way, you'll be approving the amendment of the budget if one needs to be in, in FAB since September, we've reduced that outside council budget.
Okay, motion carries. Sorry, sir?
No, that's all right, I'm doing a commissioner comment.
Okay. Uh, motion carries. Okay, let's move to item number eleven. Discussion, consideration, and possible action on an ordinance relating to citizens' participation. Uh, staff report on this matter or not? Or we just have discussion? Lynda, you want to, you're not the staff, but do you want to report?
Uh, yes, I'll go through a little bit of history here. Citizens' participation ordinance that, uh, I drafted along with the city attorney was presented a couple months ago, and there was some concerns voiced at that time during the discussion. So I went back, uh, along with the assistance from the city attorney, and made some changes based on that discussion, and also based on discussion that we had during our retreat. And, uh, the city attorney, uh, took that revised ordinance and sent it to all the commissioners and asked for feedback, uh, all the commission members, and Mary Ann, was the mayor's comments the only ones that you received?
Yes, ma'am.
After it went out? And she incorporated those changes into the ordinance. So what we have now is a draft ordinance that all the commissioners have had an opportunity to review and provide feedback, and, uh, I, I'm hoping that we addressed all the concerns and that we now have an ordinance that we can put in place that will give some defined order to citizens' participation, and that will be fair to all parties.
Let me just ask a couple of questions on it, so I'll, I'll understand the wording. What does personal issues mean?
Should be personnel.
Personnel.
It's personnel issues.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I guess I need to learn how to read.
I got a whole bunch of personal issues there.
Okay.
Maybe we should.
Okay. One more question. Uh, you're, you're wanting commissioner, just before commissioner comments, public speaking, and like I was looking at our agenda today, and we had citizens' participation early, and we have citizen, I mean, commissioner comments later, what is the thinking there, so I'll better understand?
Well.
If I'm just immediately following you.
I'm not sure why commissioner comments were at the end this time, but, because commissioner comments at one time were at the beginning of the meeting, right?
Have to retreat, um, mayor of the county.
Oh, okay, that was request.
See it like it is now, where it's at the end.
Yeah, I would, too.
So after the business is over with, then I have a, a party girl wouldn't have to comment, but now.
But some of the businesses come up you'd like to comment about.
The intent, uh, I think, is to give the opportunity for citizens to speak without interruption, but.
Right.
If they say something that is incorrect, then the commissioner would have an opportunity to also make a statement.
But we could do that with commissioners' comments later, right?
Well, I, I think that you need to be able to do it fairly.
I don't care what you do, I just was trying to understand what.
I, I think that.
Or if you had a question, or?
I think the commissioner should be able to address it right away, rather than waiting until the end of the meeting, uh, because by the end of the meeting, people, some people may have already left, and some people may not remember what was said by the citizen. But I just don't like seeing the citizen interrupted while they're trying to speak during that three minutes.
Okay, I'm not picking on it, I just want to fully understand what, where it's coming from, so that I understand. So, in other words, no longer will commissioners' comments be at the end when this passes, it will be, it'll have to be in the beginning.
Well, you can, you can go ahead and leave them at the end, and but allow commissioners.
To comment.
To address the comment.
To address in specific.
Okay, well, that's fine, that's fine.
I like that.
I like that, because I think some of the things that we've discussed might be comments at the end for the commissioners. Okay, any other questions on this matter?
I guess, um, just the part where it says, "City business involving arbitration or litigation are prohibited." Um, it seems like we could, it's kind of a fine line, if we had somebody like representing, like, say, a certain tribal government, or two, or one of the four, or someone else that had, that made comments that, you know, at this time, perhaps, that is going down the road of arbitration or some sort of issue, but they don't know, we don't know where it is at, at the time, we don't necessarily have to, have to respond to it, but if they don't, I would say that they have a right to, to say what they, what they're thinking, especially if it's.
I, I think the thinking there is that this is a working meeting for the, the city commission, and, uh, there are issues that we need to hear directly from before we vote or take some kind of action, uh, maybe immediately after our meeting by those who want to address those issues, but we're trying to restrict this to city business, um, on, on issues that we have the authority to act on, and there is nothing, absolutely nothing, that prevents any citizen from contacting us individually prior to these meetings, or talking to us after the meetings. The, uh, the citizens will always have an opportunity to, to visit with us on issues that they, that they feel strongly about, but the city commission meeting, the working meeting that we have up here, uh, to make decisions, if there is something imminent that, uh, that they need to address with us before we vote, I think that that's one of the most important things that we need to hear, and certainly things that we can act on, that we can take some action on. If there's something that's, uh, being litigated, I'm not sure that that's something that we can do anything about.
Well, you've got, you kind of got your cake, and you're, you're eating it, too, because you have something that's on the agenda, whether, where you, you, it's city business, whether on the agenda or not, which, that would cover what I'm talking about.
No, I'm not.
But then you have about, then you're talking about, oh, well, it's got to be something we can vote on today.
No.
Well, I, I.
I didn't see that.
No.
No, but I mean, what she just said was.
But what she's saying is she's, we're excluding things that are in litigation, we can't do anything.
Yeah.
If it's already in litigation.
But if it's something like, okay, someone comes up and they're like, Doug gone, that light over there off a union in MacArthur is, like, so dangerous, and, and it's not on the agenda, but they'd like to see something.
That's all they want to hear.
Yeah, that's included.
Of course it can. But if it's like, uh, Doug gone, I'd like for the, uh, for the city to, to treat people south of the river a certain way, you know, even though it's, might have something to do with some litigation indirectly, and they might not even know that it does, they should have the, I think that they, we shouldn't be like, oh, well, we need to restrict what you're saying to, to city business that we could act on, because after, you know, I'm just trying to say.
I know.
It's a little bit too restrictive.
We are not to speak to the issue that's being litigated, I think that's what this is saying.
We don't need to speak to it, but the city, or, but the city.
No, 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 I'm saying the citizen.
Citizen can.
The citizen does need, does not need to speak to us about an issue that's being litigated that we can't do anything about.
My concern is how quickly the confidentiality of that arbitration, litigation, so forth, can get eroded in here by just one stray remark from a commissioner in response to a discussion on that, on that particular litigation or that particular, uh, arbitration or, or whatever it is, um, because, you know, well, that's just my concern, because if the privilege gets broken in here, it may be lost forever. So from, from a legal point of view, that's my concern.
Right.
I think we also have to be careful about violating the Open Meeting Act, too, don't we? Where we start discussing issues that aren't on the agenda, that, um, that we probably shouldn't.
We, we're bound to that, but I don't think that the citizen is, is what I'm trying to say.
But we may enter into a discussion.
Oh, definitely not. I, I think that we.
No.
Well.
It's citizens' comments, not commissioners'.
I, I, I think that, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, go ahead, Keith.
I, I, I think that Lynda and, and, uh, our attorney, Mary Ann, has done a, a good job of.
I agree.
Taking all the input, the things that, that each of us, you know, provided as input, and coming up with something that is workable. I, I sort of see your, your point, Mike, but I believe that there's too much danger if there's things in litigation, so I like the way it's written now, I really do. I don't necessarily believe that it needs to be an ordinance, I'm not against ordinance, and in the, in the spirit of cooperation, I will vote for it, you know, as an ordinance, I think it's. I think it's just be a policy, but I think that it's, you know, Lynda and Mary Ann's worked an awful lot trying to get this in a form that all of us can live with and I certainly think that it's ninety-nine percent there, it may not be completely. There's, you know, a couple of things here or there that I might not entirely agree with, you know. You know, it's hard for me to keep my mouth shut sometimes, but...
How is it, just, if it's gonna be an ordinance or a policy, how are we gonna enforce it?
We're gonna take you to jail if you violate it.
Yeah, I mean, is, are we gonna have the...
Right here, I'm gonna have to have those rules right in front of me all the time.
Just have the gavel.
Yeah. And somebody may have to say, "Worce, Wes, you're not binding by the rules."
Well, I think one of the nice things about having it documented is we all have a meeting of the minds. We all understand what those rules are. Right now, you know, since it's not in writing, you know, it's...
It's free draw.
Everybody has their own understanding of what those rules should be and the citizens don't know, probably don't have a clue what those rules are. If it's in writing, at least the citizens will have access to them to know, you know, what they can and can't do.
And we post those, hand them out.
Before anybody makes a motion... Well, I have a question, if you're gonna make a motion to approve. Section one, the second paragraph is where it says, "The time for citizen participation shall be on the agenda just before comments and before regular business." Are you wanting to change that so that it just says before commissioner comments strike just and before it takes up its business?
Yes.
So that it just says before?
Just get rid of the just.
It doesn't need to be like exactly the same as...
Okay, and then it's fine.
Actually, we only need to take out just.
Okay.
Can, one other thing, like just, if the mayor can take away the, like if he can shut them down because they're not following the rules, could he also allow them to speak if he likes what they're saying or if he wants to hear?
Well, and just as a, you know, parliamentary thing, if he, if, the questions are to be addressed to him. And he can, I think, extend the time. Don't know that you'd want him to shorten it, but he could certainly extend it. And if he makes a ruling that some of you don't like, you have a vote and you overruling.
But I'm just trying to say, as long as there's some sort of back door that...
Well, let me kind of give you an example. When the CPN was here, I told them thirty-five minutes.
You went forty-five?
And he told, well, I went fifty-something, but he told me he had thirteen people to speak. And so I counted to thirteen, when it got to thirteen, it was fifty-three minutes and he told me he had thirteen people to speak, so I felt like it was time to shut that down at that time. But it's a lot farther than what in the beginning, so I think there is some flexibility.
Okay. So the flexibility will be in there without having to write it in, right?
Yeah.
Agreed? Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the citizen participation ordinance with the one change Mary Ann suggested.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second.
Wait, I would really like to add that, if we're gonna, this is approving as an ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, if it's gonna be an ordinance, so I'd like for, if we could, just put it in there that the mayor can also use discretion either way.
It's in there.
I know it's on the very bottom, it talks about he can...
No, it's also in, and it's not just the mayor. A third paragraph of section one, citizen comments are three, twelve, twenty-four unless an extension is proposed by a commission member and approved by a majority.
So that...
So...
Thanks, that's...
That's in.
Okay, let's vote.
Thanks.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay, item number twelve is acknowledge the sales tax report.
It's a little bit better than last month, but February sales tax collected was one million five hundred and eighty thousand dollars and unfortunately, it's only eleven thousand over last year's, which is like three quarters of a percent. Right now, sales tax is not making budgets, but this afternoon I looked at all the revenues that had come up, come through today and there are some that are overcompensating it, so we are on target for revenue overall, but sales tax is just hovering. I mean, next year, it's gonna be, we'll be budgeting flat.
Well, next month, Chick-fil-A sales tax will be...
Yeah. Pan the guard.
But I had an interesting comment from a lady that goes to our church, her husband runs this antique store on East Main down there. I don't know.
Virginians or no?
No.
Reeves Antique?
No, uh-uh. The other one.
Reeves is...
Keep going. Anyway, anyway, she said to me, said, "What is going on in Shawnee for the last six weeks?" And I said, "I have no idea." She said, "The merchants on Main Street, the antique stores in our," said, "You can't even get down the aisles of our stores for five weeks." Said, "We've sold more in five weeks than we had sold in four months."
Huh.
Said, "It's just like people are crawling and I don't know what it is." But I thought, if that's happening other parts of our city, we should be seeing a lift hopefully in that.
So is the use tax up?
I'm sorry?
Is the use tax up?
It was up about fifteen thousand. But that's, that's very small, I mean, use tax is only about eighty-five thousand dollars, so it was up ten thousand, it was a hundred and two thousand this month.
What is our plan to sit down with the new mall people and they were gonna furnish us where they bought everything? Is that to be done at the end of the project or is that to be done during the project?
I think it's more the end.
Okay.
We should be starting to see some of them, I think, unless, I can call, I can talk to the Oklahoma Tax Commission and see exactly how they set it up. Because some, like oil, when they came through with the pipelines, they waited to the very end of the project. That's when we got such a huge hit at one time. It's just easier, it's cleaner and it gets pushed out.
Sure.
And if that's the way they're choosing to do it, that's fine, I mean, but we'll, I can talk to Dave and see what exactly how, if they set up anything and see if we should be starting to see some. Yes, Chick-fil-A did open last week. Unfortunately, yes, we'll see a small bump, but unfortunately, when a restaurant or something of the same nature opens up, it just gets...
Other ones loses.
It just gets divided up.
Right.
Yeah, I think he said they hired seventy-five people, that's what he told us.
Now, we'll bring in more jobs.
How many? Ninety people at that one restaurant?
At one Chick-fil-A.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it will bring in more jobs, that's for sure. And hopefully, they will spend their paychecks here in Shawnee.
When does the marketplace open up?
Hobby Lobby opens February twenty-seventh.
Okay.
And then other stores sequentially after.
Great.
Thank you.
How about Aldi, Aldi Foods?
Probably either April or May.
April, May?
Okay, let's move on to our new business. Any new business?
Mr. Mayor, there's no new business.
Commissioner's comments now, Mr. Harrod, you've been waiting to tell us.
Well, I just, saying you've got the budget details and dates and everything like that set up for our hearings and all this kind of business, you've done that.
I sent out a budget, you guys approved the budget separately, I can send it to you.
I'm not saying you didn't.
I'll send it to you right now.
I didn't see it either, did you see it?
I saw it, but I don't...
Hey, wait a minute, there's three of us here saying we didn't see it.
I want to get the date it was approved.
No. The one you handed out or you emailed?
It was on the consent...
Do you want a second?
I'll send it all to you then.
I didn't write them down, my porn.
I didn't write it.
We are working on the budget now as we speak and my goal is to meet with commissioners probably in April. And then a public hearing, we'll have one in May. I like to give it a couple of weeks in between and then we'll do our second public, I like to do two public hearings. We do one in May and then, so if there's any changes, two weeks is very short. It's a very large document to try to change everything and everything. And then we'll do a second public hearing in the middle of June and then we will adopt also.
Okay.
And I'm not saying you didn't, but I just didn't write them down, so I need to do that.
Oh, yeah, well, do.
But you published the budget in the second week in May or the second public hearing in May?
It'll be out, it'll be circulated, you guys will see it, what I normally do.
April.
I meet with one or two, you know, a couple of you at a time, so it's not a public meeting. So we just explain what's going on and how we budget and then we do a public hearing in the first, usually the first meeting in May or the second meeting in May.
Just a couple of things I'll share with you. There was a nine-one-one meeting over at the courthouse today and about the merger and I had to leave before, to come over here to meet with the search committee. And I'm sure we'll be reading about it in the papers or Gloria Trotter was there and the New Star was there, so...
I heard about it.
So I, I, I've heard lots of things, but I don't know any of them facts, so wanted to tell you about that.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes.
On the budget, what we usually do in, in April is really like operational, so if you have capital ideas, that usually comes up during that time. I mean, we have, I have all the departments and then, so when we discuss individually, that's when you can, you have input or if you have some ideas, you can send it to me earlier.
When, are we at the last payment on like a parking lot and stuff like that?
I'll have to give the exact dates. We're getting, we're getting close on some of it. We should get, we should get some relief in the next couple of years, so hopefully...
I doubt it, I don't know whether it's in twenty fifteen or twenty...
Ah, I can't remember.
Sixteen or what?
We've taken out, you know, we have some loans, we have SMA loans and all that stuff and I don't want to quote something different.
There was also an insurance committee meeting today. They're looking at plans, there's a representative from each department attends and then there's a committee of three of us from the commission that would have been on that and they have a fellow that presents all the options and so that's in the process. I don't know if that's April or May when that insurance has to be renewed or something, but you'll hear more...
Like re-enrollment in the middle of May.
You'll hear more about that.
Nationwide thing or something?
No, it's...
No, no, it's about that.
Big drop in shield.
Blue Cross and Blue Shield that they have and changes in it and things like that for the employees, so. So just trying to let you know what's going on, okay?
Mayor, if you could find someone else besides me to serve on that committee, I would appreciate it. If you could make another, a different appointment. I'm getting more on my plate than I can handle.
Okay, does anybody want to volunteer for that position?
Yeah, we gotta negotiate with them.
Gary, you want to volunteer? Okay, sir, Mr. Vogel being in the insurance business, we'll let him. Shaw, the very next time you're going to work, you're getting to work, okay?
Keith, we gotta get on the sidewalks, dude.
Yeah, we do. And so, is it my turn to talk? It's one of the things I was...
Commissioner's comment.
So sidewalks, since we, we really need to take a look at up there, marketplace, where the new marketplace is going in. We don't have, you know, there's gonna be school buses and everything else unloading children up there and we have inconsistent sidewalks right now on the east side of Kickapoo.
We do, uh-huh.
So we really need to see if we can figure out a way to fund some additional sidewalk work there to get those, you know, we're gonna have, I think, on the west side, I think we're gonna have sidewalk all the way down.
We will, we will, and through, after developments.
Yeah, so we need to take a look at the east side and see if we can complete the sidewalk all the way down to the new bank at least, to the corner, and that would make it look really, really good there, figure, figure something out.
Over there behind Subway to get them kind of around to...
Yeah, we just, we just, there's a lot, there's a lot of people starting to walk, you know, and it gets warmer weather, it's gonna even be more. And speaking of Kickapoo Street, man, is there anything we can do to get that thing?
Moving.
It's, you know, I kept on hearing it was gonna be April or May, but I, it doesn't, they're not making much progress on that.
The latest schedule, I've seen, you know, pretty soon the completion date in the fall, fall.
September, October.
Would it help at all if we wrote a letter and excuse me?
Well, I can tell you that I have a construction project myself and you can't pour concrete when the ground's rolling. And you can't pour concrete when it's, when the temperature's falling, so...
We don't care about that, we just want the run fixed.
Yeah, but I'm telling you that, it's like mine, I'm doing everything I can because it's costing me money every day that I don't get it done, so I'm telling you that you're just, they're just weather, you cannot do it, you cannot do it.
Well, I'm like you, Michael, I go to play golf at the Elks and it's taken me thirty minutes sometimes to get through that intersection of the car, so now I go up to Forty-Fifth and go around.
Oh, yeah, but, but one thing that we could do, it's like from, from Kickapoo Spur to Independence, they've, they've had that section completed, both sides, for months and months and months, but they use it as a parking lot on that one side. Just go ahead and open it, let's open up what we can, right?
Well, that's not our project, though.
You're over there by Steve's Body Shop? Yeah.
Not our project.
They got like cars.
Justin, is that the state?
Yeah, it's the state.
Yes, it is, unfortunately, we have, we have a pull over the contractor on that project.
So no letters of request to...
Why don't I do this, why don't I get some more information in terms of the updated, most recent schedule on sequencing of completion and opening and, and...
Well, we don't want to create too big a problem because we want south.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we do want south. We don't want to stir them up too much, but just a little helps there.
I'm serious about the pouring the concrete.
Just a nudge.
You put down asphalt and so forth and temperature's falling, so, you know, it's really hot, but when you're pouring concrete, it's gotta be temperature above freezing.
Yeah, but it was, it was perfect weather up until like December, November, you know? So there's really no excuse, they should have had more done.
Well, I can tell you that we started our project and, you know, we poured concrete every day we could. And we haven't poured in two months.
Okay, any other comments?
I'd like to provide comment about our recent attendance to the Chick-fil-A event. I thought that was well done.
Oh, it was horrible. I ate too much.
Did you guys get free chicken?
The mayor didn't get to talk too much.
Chicken sandwich for black freedom, that's bad.
They provided food and it was just, just well done. There was a lot of people there, so I certainly appreciated that.
Did you guys get the first hundred Chick-fil-A for life or for years?
No, 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 no.
You'd have to camped out the night before there.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, come right on, we're talking mood tonight.
But for anybody who has a passion about downtown Shawnee, who would like to maybe make a contribution or see how you might contribute or even just to learn about all the great things that are going on in downtown Shawnee and to see the synergy that is occurring, there is a seminar, February the twenty-sixth, that's Thursday, a week from this Thursday, on February the twenty-sixth, from eight-thirty to noon. And we have people here that were in charge of developing that Reimagine Shawnee document that some of you went to meetings for, and so people from OU are going to be here to speak, some people from the State Historic Preservation Office are going to be here. And it's at one-twenty North Broadway at eight-thirty.
What's the name of that place?
Vintage venue. One-twenty North Broadway. Big sign up there on front. But anyhow, it, I think will be well worth your while if you'd like to learn and see all the excitement going on in downtown Shawnee right now. Our city manager will be there, mayor will be there, the SEDF, Tim Berg, will be there to speak and so it would be well worth your time, just be sure and let me know because the city of Shawnee is graciously furnishing lunch for that, so we need to get a head count. So if you're interested, let me know and we have plenty of room. We've got about fifty people that have RSVP'd so far and we can hold about seventy-five, so just let me know. Thank you.
You're saying that's it, at noon? Eight-thirty?
Can only get twenty-five more people in there?
We'll, we'll make room.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just one more. Justin, I had a constituent ask me about the new lights on Kickapoo. They were concerned about the, whether they were high windproof. They said they look great, the medians look really good, but they were concerned that the tall black pole lights there.
I mean, they are engineered to a specification. I think it's at least 90 miles per hour is what the, what the standard is. So it is an engineered product that's, that's certified to withstand a, a certain windload. So I know they, they look very nice, and, and it's a fair question, but, but I don't think that there, any additional concern there.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I am going to recess our city commission and to, and convene the Shawnee Airport Authority. I will declare that we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
Tell me.
A motion by Vice Mayor Harrod. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Daxter seconded, okay. Motion carries. Any new business?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority, and I will call to order the municipal authority, and we'll declare we have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So I move second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hall in a second, of Vice Mayor Harrod. Let's vote on that matter. Motion carries. Item number two is consider bids for the emergency generator projects, contract number SMA 1504.
Hey, are you going to take one? We just had them all down. Oh, take one sheet. Take one, pass it down. Did you not get one?
He did.
I did get one, sorry.
Take one, pass it down. It's amazing, that much difference. Somebody, huh? That much of work.
Here's another one, take one, pass it down.
Does Libra mean? No, it's Tiger, isn't it? Tiger? Libra? No, it's.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Commission.
Good evening.
What I've got here from SMA Agenda 2A are some bids that I opened up for the emergency generator project at the Public Works Building, project SMA 1504. I'll read those into the record. Libra Electric Company at Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, had a bid amount of $69,690. All phase electric, out of Shawnee, Oklahoma, had a bid of $78,664. And Sage Mill Construction out of Meeker, Oklahoma, had a bid of $152,744, or $744, excuse And then 2B was our, will be our Tennessee lift station rehab. It's an old lift station operating since '79. SMA Project 15-03. Bidders are, first bidder is Jordan Contractors out of Tecumseh, Oklahoma, with a bid of $147,650. Second bidder is Farrell D. Howard Construction out of Lone Grove, Oklahoma. He had a bid of $289,444. Slattery Construction out of Woodward, Oklahoma, had a bid of $117,704. And then McKee Excavation out of Prey, Oklahoma, had a bid of $184,556. I would like to defer both bid openings to the Mark's Second Commission for award.
Tell me.
A motion to defer these items to the next meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yes, okay. Commissioner Shaw? Okay, let's vote. Why are we buying, why are we doing lift stations for Tennessee? Why don't we just do them here?
You can all vote.
Yeah, I'm worried about Tennessee.
Tennessee.
I think we're spending money in Tennessee. Motion carries.
Can't we do it?
Any need to vote? Did we, let's vote on item B.